All right, folks, we're going to reconvene in open session with announcement from our city attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Previously this afternoon, the city council went into closed session to discuss two items of pending litigation. On a five to zero vote, the city council gave direction on both items.
Perfect. Well, adjourn that meeting, folks, and go to the next meeting. The city council adjourned regular meeting for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Let's call the meeting into order. With that, we're going to do the pledge of the flag led by Juliette Modern Juliette. Your sister, come down here.
Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, you two. Way to go. Where's the mayor pro tem Franklin? Joe? He used this part. You're going to have to have them in their city pins. We're going to say thank you for doing this, ladies. So Juliette, tell us, you're the honorable student. Where are you? What school do you go to?
I go to MBMS.
And who's your favorite teacher?
They're all great, right?
Yeah, they're all amazing.
She wants this job, doesn't she? So who's with you here tonight?
Um, this is my sister Sloan and my mom and stepdad.
All right, way to go. So come on over here. All my colleagues, come and join us. On behalf of the city council, we're all here with you and everybody here in the city. We're going to present you with this. Ladies and council, in view of the political allegiance, you two need to be right in the middle for a picture with everybody here. Right? You two.
Thank you.
You want to turn towards mom and dad to your right?
Yeah.
Let me get out of your way. We're going to turn to you guys first.
You're not mayor yet. You can't tell.
Okay. You jump in. Sure. It's free. Don't cost you anything. Check them out on YouTube. Good pictures. Come on.
There you go, guys. One and two and one last one. Three.
Don't go anywhere. Look towards the center. Ladies in the center there.
One, two, three. Got it.
All right, congratulations, you two. Come on. Take it here, you guys. I think I'll miss that part the most.
That's very sweet.
All right, council, approval agenda, item D and a motion in a second, please.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Councilmember Holworth.
Here.
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Here.
Mayor Montgomery.
Here.
Now, item D. I have a motion by Councilmember Holworth in a second. Councilmember Lesser, voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. City council and community organization announcements about upcoming events, one minute per person. So those of you who want to clap, remember Franklin can hold on for a little bit longer. Josh?
Hi, good evening, members of the council and mayor and future mayor and everyone else. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to let the community know that children ages five to twelve are invited to attend Wild World Dancing Jellyfish in the Art of Conservation on Wednesday, January seventeenth at three P. M. at the library. Learn about conservationist Jacques Cousteau and marine life artist Wyland while creating colorful mixed media hanging jellyfish art. Registration is available on our website, L A County Library dot org. And I would also like to remind the community that we will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Thank you for your time and congratulations.
And Josh has done a great job for us to keep us all posted. Thank you for what you do in the library. We all appreciate that. Who else? Community announcement for one minute length. Anybody else? Are they excited to go on to the city? Oh, Amanda, come on up.
Good evening, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, soon switching, and council members, community members and colleagues. My name is Amanda McLennan, and I'm the emergency prepared administrator for Manhattan Beach, working in the fire department. And it's a great night. There are just a couple of quick things on safety and mitigation that we really need your partnership on. So the first is the local hazard mitigation plan. The community's been doing a great job. The committee's been doing a great job for the last few months, but we really need some help with some survey responses. So if you guys can pop on to our website and go under the fire department and the local hazard mitigation plan, and you'll see these surveys. If you can just take them, twenty minutes, and we really, really need the feedback from all of you and your history and knowledge of the city. The other item is, I think everybody probably heard their alerts this morning through their cell phone. So that's Alert South Bay that does that. And if we can't, if we can't reach you, we can't warn you and alert you. So this is just another reminder to please sign up for Alert South Bay. Easily text ALERTSB to eight 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 seven seven seven. You can also go on our website and do it there or go to alertsouthbay.com. So those are the safety and mitigation, and back to the exciting evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Anybody else? How about on Zoom, Martha?
There's no request via Zoom.
All right. We're going to move to the reorg, this is the most fun part of the evening, folks. Recognition of myself by everyone else here and then our new soon-to-be mayor, Joe Franklin. Mayor. We're going to go public comments. Now, we're going to get right to it, Quinn. So anyone else public comments? You can get a talk if anything you want to, three minutes long, which delays Joe taking over. But other than that, take your time. Anything you want to talk, three minutes long.
You're pretty eager.
Now's your time. Does anybody want to slow your own dad getting sworn in?
Yeah.
My name is Tiffany Barbara, and I'm a twenty-plus-year resident here in Manhattan Beach and an MBUSD parent. And I want to thank you all for your service to our community. I also wanted to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Joe Franklin on his appointment to mayor of Manhattan Beach tonight. At the same time, I wanted to bid a warm thank you to Richard Montgomery for his dedicated service as our mayor for the last nine months. I had the pleasure of first meeting Joe in May of two thousand twenty, a time when our community faced significant challenges, as you all know. And it was during those uncertain days that Joe and his wife Nancy invited us into their home as they were distributing yard signs in support of our police department. This simple act of hospitality blossomed into a lasting friendship. We shared our concerns about the impact of the pandemic on our public schools, particularly the challenges faced by vulnerable students forced to stay home. It was during those early days that the seeds of Kidz knee classrooms were sown, and Joe was elected to city council. Joe recognized the risks and potential damage to our local students and teachers. Without hesitation, he helped us raise awareness through our newly-formed parent advocacy group, Kidz knee classrooms. His commitment to our community also became evident during the citizen-led Measure A, where he bravely spoke out against an expensive and financially unsupported parcel tax in two thousand twenty-two. Manhattan Beach, with Joe's insight, voted down the measure in an overwhelming majority. But Joe's dedication did not stop there. He further demonstrated his commitment to MBUSD by joining the superintendent's parcel tax committee with me last year. And now, as a co-signer on the upcoming March fifth ballot initiative in support of the renewal of the parcel tax, Joe has taken a crucial step towards securing much-needed support for our schools. This parcel tax, if renewed on March fifth of this year, will not increase existing taxes and will provide the school district with approximately two and a half million dollars annually, a lifeline equivalent to the cost of twenty to twenty-five teachers. Our school district is facing significant financial challenges with a five million dollar deficit this year and a two and a half million deficit next year. Under Joe's leadership and the support of all of our city council members, I'm confident that our beachside community will rally together to save our teachers by renewing Measure MB on March fifth. As a symbol of our collective support, please consider taking a yard sign during the meeting break and visit, yes, the number four, measuremb.com to donate and get involved. Together, let us continue to build a thriving and united Manhattan Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. I'm not a big clap fan, but tonight we're exempt from clapping. All right. Who else has got something they want to talk about? Public comments, three minutes. Hello, Fred.
My name is Fred Taylor. I'm a forty-eight-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I would like to say I moved here when I was five, but I can't. First of all, thank you, outgoing Mayor Montgomery and council persons Holworth, Lesser and Napolitano, for your willingness to invest countless hours between these meetings and serve voluntarily, and it's commendable. We thank you. It's with special pleasure that I arise to support Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin as our next mayor. Since COVID, the wings of adversity have hit our city hard. In my opinion, many policies out of the mainstream have been pushed and pressed. Activists from out of town have even moved here temporarily to change the character of our fair city. But through it all, Joe Franklin has been a quintessent example of a nonpartisan leader. He isn't positioning himself for the next rung on the political ladder. He simply loves our city, and he's invested in making our city the best. Through many of our local storms of recent date, he's sailed fast to the timeless principles of sound reason, common sense, and traditional American values. When you talk to Joe, he's the kind of guy that looks you in the eye and gives you his full attention. I heartily embrace the tone of leadership he'll bring to the council. All the best to each one of you.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else between me and Joe changing hands? All right. Tim? Evening, Tim.
First and foremost, Mayor Montgomery, thank you very much for your spectacular time served.
Thank you, Tim.
Appreciate everything that you've done. Honorable Mayor Franklin, I celebrate honorable pro tem Mayor Franklin. I thought I was going to do this after you got sworn in. I celebrate your new position. I appreciate the discussions we've shared and offer the example that we are always civil and respectful to one another, no matter the level of our disagreement. We are of the generation that punishing a child meant that you couldn't go outside, whereas today punishing the child means you have to go outside. As mayor, I look forward to discussing the discussions that we'll have and which we are in agreement. I was especially moved by your comments during the December fifth city council meeting when you described your encounter with the Bruce family. So much so, I have it here. Your words. I hosted Anna Gonzalez, the matriarch of the family of Major George and Ethel Prelo at Bruce's Beach in mid-October, and learned from her the great significance of paying tribute to the memory and accomplishments of beloved ancestors. I spoke with many family members who gathered from across the country and watched and listened as they were visibly and emotionally moved by being at the very spot, which represented the triumphs and tribulations that they had faced over the years. And Anna, a woman who signs her emails with the phrase, quote, "God Answers Email," unquote, was gracious, appreciative, and stoic, as I handed her an official copy of the city's apology for what happened at Bruce's Beach in the nineteen twenties. Bruce's Beach Park, being a significant local and national touchstone, should be included in the reverential celebration of June nineteenth. Mr. Pro Tem Mayor, your words touched me deeply. I am so pleased and encouraged to hear that the new, the new soon-to-be mayor of Manhattan Beach has the humility and humanity to host and learn from the family, who are the subjects of the resolution that was approved by every city council member except for Joe Franklin. Thank you for being a living example of how we all make mistakes and showing the courage and character it takes to correct them. I look forward to your term as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. All right, folks, who else has an announcement? Taylor?
Can you pass the tissues?
Do it. Make them cry.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, honored guests, and especially the incredible residents of Manhattan Beach, today is a day filled with pride, joy, and a touch of nostalgia as we gather to witness a significant moment in the life of not only my father, but also the life of our beloved city. Dad, as I look out into the sea of faces, I can't help but be overwhelmed by the love and support that surrounds us. It is a testament to the genuine connection you have with the people of Manhattan Beach. From the moment I could understand the concept of leadership, you were my first example of what it meant to be compassionate, dedicated, and unwavering in your commitment to others. Growing up, our home was not just a place for family gathered. It was a hub of community spirit. Dad, with his tireless enthusiasm, turned every event into an opportunity to bring people together. Whether it was organizing neighborhood block parties, coaching Little League teams, or simply being there for a neighbor in need, you embodied the true spirit of service. And now, as you embark on this new chapter as the new mayor of Manhattan Beach, I have no doubt that you will bring the same warmth, dedication, and integrity to the heart of our local government. Your love for this community has always been palpable, but now will be channeled into the policies and the decisions that will shape the future of Manhattan Beach. As your daughter, I want to express not only my pride, but also my gratitude. Thank you for being a living example of kindness, humility, and the power of genuine connection. I know that you will serve with the same grace and love that you have poured into our family and this community for all these years. So here's to you, Dad, as you step into your new role. May your journey be filled with success. May your decisions be guided by wisdom, and may your heart continue to be in harmony with the pulse of Manhattan Beach. Congratulations.
Who wants to follow that? Seeing none? Let me ask Martha, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have Jim Burton.
All right. Sorry, Joe, they're slowing you down.
I know. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yeah, Richard, it's going to be, it's tough to see you leave. I really appreciate your leadership over the last, the last several years, your decision-making ability, your friendship to myself and my family, your commitment to public service has just been fantastic. And we've had a lot of trying times here in the city of Manhattan Beach, and for whatever reason, you seem to be sitting at the helm during most of them. But I just want to express, express my gratitude. Unfortunately, my business travels have taken me out of Manhattan Beach on Tuesday nights for the last couple of months, and I'm saying hello from the great state of Texas, which I know you can appreciate, hooking horns. But I know we're in good hands. And Councilmember Franklin, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm looking, looking forward to your leadership also. I've enjoyed the partnership that you and I have had regarding bike helmets and safety of e-bikes. Looking forward to that. But I did just want to call in and, Mr. Mayor, just again, express my appreciation for you, your leadership, and all those in council. But right now, tonight's your night, Richard, and we, we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Anyone else, Martha?
Heather Kim.
Kim.
You are finally going to be our mayor. I'm so excited, as are most people in this town, that you are finally mayor, and we can look forward to a year of being led by a really true patriot, someone who loves Manhattan Beach, who loves our country, who loves all the residents here, whether they agree with you or not. You are somebody who truly unites people together, and I, I'm just so excited for the next nine months with, with you at the, you know, at the reins here. I don't know, I'm just babbling on. I can't wait to see you soon, and thank you for all you have done and that, all that you will continue to do. We love you, Joe.
Thank you, Heather.
Anyone else?
There's no additional request via Zoom.
All right. Well, anyone else here want to talk? Close public comment. I'm going to go out of order here for a second. I want to recognize some people that are here. It's very rare that you just man outside the church. My senior Barry. It's always a pleasure to see him outside in city council. Once every ten years, we get to see him here. Outside that, I know Councilman Seaman, Mayor Massey, and Councilmember Jackson here from Ose Beach somewhere. They are behind me. Anybody else here from other cities? Seeing none, I see former mayors. I see Holmes, Mayor Lesser, Mayor Hadley, Mayor Powell. Did I miss anybody?
Treasury.
Mayor Lilig, Treasury. That's the guy you gotta like.
We've got a.
There you go.
Francois.
Dean, thank you. Didn't see you back there hiding in the dark.
Shadows.
We're glad you're here, everybody, and it's a big deal. It's a big deal to have a change of rotation. As Steve would always say, peaceful transition. More importantly, you want to share with your friends, your residents, your neighbors, it's the best crowd to have it in. So with that, Mayor Tim, you take over, you run. From this point forward, it's your show.
Wow.
You got that blue sheet to follow? Just follow whatever Lisa said.
Actually, Lisa's running the show.
You know who's really in control here.
Trust me, we know Lisa and Martha run the show. Okay, so we, we have the recognition of outgoing Mayor Montgomery, and we're going to present some tokens and gifts of our appreciation. So the first one is me giving you something.
No, you were the gift. All right.
So on behalf of this city council. All right. So Mayor Montgomery, so on behalf of the residents of Manhattan Beach and certainly this city council, we want to present to you this wonderful gavel, so you can go ahead and pound it on the desk anywhere you are. And it's for exemplary service. Mayor Richard Montgomery, thank you so much.
Thank you, buddy.
I just have a quick personal story as well. So this man became a fixture on our block because he lived on the other block. He lived on Elm, and he joined in all the fun, and.
Tell them why about Nancy's Margaritas.
Oh, well, yes, it is Nancy's Margaritas and potato salad and, and everything else. But then he asked me to be his campaign manager for, what, campaign number one, two?
Three.
Three? So campaign number three. So he's a good teacher, too, because I successfully ran as well, but I learned it at the, at the feet of Richard Montgomery.
I learned it from that guy running that.
And, and so, so Steve's the one we can blame, right?
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe.
Can I get a classic little handshake of the. Oh, sure, sure. King coming and outgoing.
Thank you, everybody. Can I get back over here now?
You can make a speech.
No, I'm good.
No, okay.
Next up is Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. We have a certificate of appreciation for you. My instructions were no words of appreciation, but a certificate of appreciation, but I'm not going to follow the rules. I mean, this is nice. During, I mean, this is nice, right? We do a good job here. You know, during his tenure as Mayor Richard has exercised leadership in establishing the professional precepts of the position of mayor, has possessed the outstanding qualities of integrity and selfishness, concern, and devotion, and has truly been an asset to his colleagues and has benefited the citizens of Manhattan Beach immensely. And it is a desire of this city council that Richard be commended for his loyal dedication and achievements as mayor. So first, I present this to you. You got a city pin already, so. And to add my, my absolute deepest words of appreciation, I know people think being mayor, I mean, it is, it's a big deal, Joe. It's gonna, it's gonna be awesome. And it is amazing to see all these people here for you. You know, you are loved, and that's wonderful. But really, the most wonderful thing that you did besides represent us everywhere around the world is run these really great meetings, and it's not easy. And I love the way you would cut off our discussions sometimes, like, okay, we've had enough. Sometimes you would push back on people who would attack, kind of not attack, maybe the facts were wrong. And I just really think you are a model, Mayor. And I also really appreciate our friendship over the years. I've served six years on council with you. This is maybe our third time together as mayor. You've always kept your word to me, and that is something not to be diminished at all. And so I kept my word to you. I got you a little something.
What color is that?
That's pink, sir. Are you colored? Are you, that's pink. You should open it.
Tell them, Amy always wears, what color do you wear?
I always wear pink. But open it. Because, you know, we know he has a lot of experience. He's done this before. And I said I would get you one, too. And so therefore, what does it say, Richard?
This ain't my first rodeo.
And then I believe I give this to David. Yes? For words of appreciation, no gift. All right, there you go.
So so far, this has been a peaceful transition of power, right? I aim to keep it that way and really show my appreciation to you, Richard, by doing what you appreciate most: be brief. This is, as my colleague just mentioned, our sixth year of serving together. I've known you for twenty years, and I've really come to appreciate particularly this term, where you've encouraged people to participate, but encouraged us to be efficient, do the people's business, and move on. And I must say, it really has been a pleasure to be back on council, serve with you again, and congratulations for a well-run term. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for stealing my line about peaceful transition of power. But no, they, they didn't give me anything to give you. I don't have any gag gifts for you or anything like that. I came out from the back there where we were having our closed session, saw all these people. I thought High Rose was back on the agenda. But seeing that it's not, though, I, you know, I'm just looking around at something I can give you, so I'm just going to pick this up randomly. And I know that you appreciate this one from our district attorney. Congratulations on your, your mayorship, but that's an inside joke. But no, I just want to say thank you. You are our no-nonsense mayor who tells it like it is, even to those who say they like it, told to them like it is, until you tell them something they don't like. It's appreciated. You represent not just us, you've represented us tremendously well here in the city, but beyond. Richard is everywhere for us. He is a regional mayor who has attended many, many things on behalf of the entire community and then the council. And so we appreciate that because that keeps us in there for all those people who say, you know, pushback against Sacramento. Richard does that. He travels up there constantly. He talks to people. He networks. He makes things happen. And that's what this council has done, too. It's great you guys have served six years together, finally getting it right. That's good. Just a joke. It's just a joke. But no, just want to say thank you and congratulations, of course, to, to Joe coming in and for everyone who is here tonight to show Joe love. Keep showing that love as the decisions get made along the line, because that's what really matters. Tonight is great, but it's having love and understanding along the way, too, because everyone up here needs that at some point. So appreciate everyone being here. But my friend, congratulations. You've done a great job, as you always have. He's our catastrophe mayor. Whenever there's a catastrophe, Richard's mayor. So thank you so much for all you've done, my friend. Can we do the entire city council in a proclamation?
Sure.
Yeah, and then you get to make your speech.
You gotta hold that. Oh, yeah. Mr. Jefferson, he gave me a cue.
All right, here we go, guys. Do one regularly. Now you want to do a crazy shot? This is crazy. Only Joe went for it. Only the new mayor went for it.
It's the kid in me. Thank you.
All right.
Joe, so is your show.
Okay.
This is your seat. That's the hardest part.
All right. So I'd like to ask if there are any dignitaries from other agencies that may have accommodation or a gift for outgoing Mayor Montgomery? If you are here, please step forward. If you are here, please step forward.
Mayor Massey.
Mayor Montgomery. Hello, everybody. I'm Mayor Justin Massey of the city of Promosa Beach. Just a quick question. Are we doing the outgoing mayor only now? Because I have something for the incoming mayor as well.
I'm the mayor first.
Okay, that's what I figured.
It depends on what it is.
It won't take long because I know Richard's a fan of brevity. Our cities, this has a bunch of really elegant language, which talks about how our cities work together. You've served with integrity and honor. I've seen it. I've been part of it. So we celebrate that. And I'll keep it quick. I'm pretty sure that if you and Steve keep this up, we're gonna be here in 2063 celebrating your 14th term as mayor. So with that, Your Honor, thank you for another great term. Thank you for leading the city and helping our region through a real challenge we had during the time that you were mayor. You did a great job, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on council.
You've done a job, and it's not over yet. Want to open up Promosa? There you go. All right.
I'll just stay here.
And very briefly, I have Councilmember Jackson, Mayor Protam Franklin, Councilmember Seaman from the city of Promosa Beach here. Do any of you want to add anything that I said? Okay. I'm sure that's
Transformed.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
And should we celebrate your term, Mayor Franklin?
Oh, wait a minute. Is it bigger than Richard's?
It has more words in it. So terrific. This is your first rodeo, apparently, as far as I can tell.
I stole my line.
And you're gonna do great. I have had a few opportunities to come in contact with you. I've obviously paid attention to what's going on in Manhattan Beach. You guys share the challenges and opportunities we share. I really look forward to working with you. Hopefully, you'll be at the Conference of Mayors meeting next week, and we'll get to spend some extended time together talking. But beyond that, congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you so much.
What's that?
Got it.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any of my councilmembers want to add anything? All right, I accomplished it all.
Coming here tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello. Sorry, just give me one second. I think I have a certificate from the county here.
You're probably the biggest one here, I think.
There we go. All righty, good evening, everybody. I'm Jesslyn Waldron. I work for LA County Supervisor Holly Mitchell. I represent her on the coastal areas of the Central District of LA County. And she sent me to congratulate you and thank you for your dedication to Manhattan Beach and the Second District of LA County. One quick personal story in our work with Mayor Montgomery. Just this month, we got to do Manhattan Beach Mayor for a Day. And I have to tell you all, it was an honor to get to see your mentorship and leadership, how he worked with a Manhattan Beach middle schooler, a sixth grader, who got to follow him around for the afternoon and mentor her on what it's like to be mayor. And she was just smitten and hung on every single word you said, absorbed everything. It was a really special experience. Great job, and congratulations on a successful term.
Hi, fine, Richard, and you? Good, good to see you. Well, my Manhattan Beach pin that I received last time I was here, I'm wearing it proudly tonight. But I am going, I'm Jane Deal from Beach Cities Health District, and we're giving a certificate of appreciation for Richard Montgomery. I'm gonna read mine because I want to remind everybody about the health district. Whereas, the Beach Cities Health District enhances individuals and community health through a broad range of innovative health programs and services and collaborative partnerships with local organizations, municipalities, and elected officials, including Richard Montgomery. And whereas, Richard Montgomery has dedicated his time, energy, and civic service to partnering with Beach Cities Health District on several initiatives to make healthy choices available and accessible to all. Whereas, Richard Montgomery's dedication to preventing health success in mayors is appreciated by citizens, officials, students, families, and employees throughout the Beach Cities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Beach Cities Health District Board of Directors, on behalf of the entire organization, hereby issues a proclamation to Richard Montgomery in recognition of his unwavering commitment as a partner in health to create a healthy beach community for all ages.
I'm here.
And we also can't wait to partner with you, Joe, as the new mayor. And so we'll have many interactions to come. Congratulations.
So, Richard, there's one more I forgot to give you. And, Richard, very generously, you heard about Mayor for a Day, but he would also offer that up to our local charitable organizations to bid on so that you could become a mayor for a day. So I just wanted to show that I actually purchased one probably about four years ago, before I was on council. Okay? And so what I did is I endorsed it over to you so in case you ever want to become mayor for a day during my term, so I consider it redeemed.
Very much, appreciate that. I'm saving that one.
So, Richard, it's time for you to make comments.
Everybody sit down, please. Justin, Mayor Massey's correct. Brevity is my favorite word. And tonight is actually Joe's night. It's not my night. Pause for effect. So start off with things that most of you don't know about the job as mayor. If you think election's tough, try being mayor in the city of Manhattan Beach. Your time, your email goes from this level to this level. Daily, not just when we have a great recession or when we have COVID, just a regular day, week, undergrounding, street dining, police, fire, whatever it is, you get a ton of emails. Some of them are happy with their work. The vast majority are not happy with your work. But that's what works here. We know what we're getting into, not a shock, but the volume of time that it takes. And don't get prepared for it unless you've done it before. So Joe came into a good time. The city's very financially strong. And the good thing, you have great police, great fire, great department heads. The city's on the right course going forward. I think you have a great team that works together well. But I would start off, my wife, your family is the first and foremost thing that makes your life bearable. You wonder, you come home, you grit your teeth at night after a meeting, you can't sleep, you walk the dog five times. Your brain has to settle down after a meeting. The longer the meeting, the more you cannot sleep. You just complain over and over in your head. So my wife, Diane, my colleagues, staff. I'll talk a second here. People think that the mayor and the council run the city. The council and mayor direct how to run the city. City Manager Bruce Mo was the one that runs the city and his department heads, our police chief, Rachel Johnson, Mike Lang in the fire department, Lisa Jenkins, HR. Why is HR important to hire good people? We're hiring seven more police officers and just three more firemen because you have good people that screen and make sure you get the best candidates going forward. Public Works, Eric leading by left, Mark Lehman, Parks and Rec. Who did I forget? Anybody else out there? Anybody I forget there?
Miguel.
Oh, C. Schrelian, finance guy. The guy signs the checks. C. Schrelian. Miguel in IT. Amanda, you met the emergency preparator administrator, EPA for short, not the best initials, but EPA, that's good. And we have a great team. And all that fell and happened because you had one guy leading the ship. Yes, we're the board of directors, but he's the one that runs it every day. And our city Quinn Burrow is the one that keeps us out of trouble. We don't make the right moves with the right way, Quinn's got to make sure with the right way. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. And the residents that gave me the position, the option to be here for the fourth term and join that shortlist of mayors that have been mayor for terms. Steve's on there, six, he's way ahead of me. But everybody else, that's why we're here. Oh, yes, here's the boss fun part. So most of you know, I live on the east side. Everybody here is on the west side. But the east side saw a lot of love this last year. What happened on the east side? Let's see. The new Polywog Park Playground Facility. Most of you have seen that, right? The Eight Me and Gallon Water Reservoir with the water treatment plant next to it. Thank you, Public Works, on that one. How about the new Fire Station Two on the east side? Have you guys seen that yet? East station, all the streets have been repaved. Not all, the ones that needed it worst have been repaved with crosswalks by our schools. We have more to go by Jocelyn Center. I already mentioned 70 police officers, three more firefighters on the way here. The exercise center, you saw them on the strand. Thank you, Russ Lassner, making that happen on that side. There's so much more that people don't see that goes on during that time span. So I want to make sure we're aware of. We may be deciding how you want to focus it. There's a team that make it all happen. And who runs my life? Mayor Kirshman runs my life. She reports to Bruce Mo. The executive assistant is the one that busts into your iPhone and changes your schedule and says, you don't forget. You have to meet this person, this person, this person. She does that. And runs our meetings, gives my life straight, all the ceremonial, leaves it to our city clerk, and Martha Alvarez, the city clerk, and Patty up there somewhere. The other ones that control our day-to-day actions, you never see unless you get an award certificate. They're the ones that take care of all of that. Unseen, but it goes behind there. I think more important here, I want to say in closing, is that we get things done because this is what happens if people don't care, gets the credit. You don't have to agree in everything. We don't agree in everything. I've lost many a 1-4 vote, folks. It's not personal. But we move past to get the right thing done. So I want to make sure everybody hears that. And someone asked me, did a paper call me today and asked, I won't mention which one. Charles did a letter D. But they called and asked me if Joe and I are good friends. I said, no. And you hear the breath, and Eric just stopped. Probably going, what the? So I waited 10 seconds. The Russ Lassner rule, wait 10 seconds. Then I said, just kidding, Joe and I are great friends. Not only that, Joe, and I talked in the past, I signed Joe's nomination papers. You can blame me for that one, but we're great friends. And we know a lot of things goes on. But when we step off the dais, folks, it's not personal. You lose, you win, it's not personal. We got afterwards, the way it goes. But it's been an honor and privilege to serve you. And you know what? I'll be around, I go to right field where Steve is now, the next rotation. But thank you for your time. It's been a privilege. And with that, we're good to go. Thank you. All right, Joe. Back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Montgomery. I'm gonna be saying that for quite a while, so you're gonna
Make a motion to, wait, you're not mayor yet.
Be patient with me.
Look. You need to make a motion. Somebody, you have to say.
I'll make it go faster, folks.
Oh, a motion vote.
Selection of the mayor. So I'm gonna make a motion that we nominate Mayor Joe Franklin for mayor. Do I have a second?
Second. Stephen, I raced.
So I have a first by myself and a second by Councilman Hoeworth, nominate Joe Franklin as mayor. Any discussion, any comments? Voting screen, please.
Call for the question.
You gotta wait.
Motion passes 5-0.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much. I think I've got my composure back, but forgive me if I lose it again as I speak. So, and I'm gonna follow the Richard Montgomery record, I think, but I may not beat it tonight. So thank you, colleagues, on your vote for my rotation as mayor. I appreciate that all of you and former Mayor Suzanne Hadley and Hildy Stern generously took the time to help me on my first term on council because it is my first rodeo.
That's not because you were mayor for a day.
I stand corrected. So my wife Nancy and daughter Taylor are here tonight. I deeply appreciate all your help and sacrifice while I serve on council. You generously gave your love, encouragement, and time. I could not have done it without you. And our son Jimmy, I think, is on Zoom from North Carolina. His three children are supposed to be asleep. If not, go to bed, kids, right now. I love you all. I'm extremely honored that Monsignor Barry has come here today. So thank you, Monsignor, again. We are mindful, we are grateful and mindful of all, of your and all the other religious institutions' efforts to help others. I will assure you that we will continue to be a dedicated partner in those efforts. Thank you. Thank you to those who took the time this evening to be here in person. I have to say I'm overwhelmed and tuning in on Zoom and also on TV. And thank you to those who made such touching public comments. I'm grateful Nancy was present to hear them. Perhaps she'll be more understanding when I don't put the dirty dishes in the dishwasher. No. To know Nancy is to know that they have to go in the dishwasher. So I want to acknowledge and sincerely thank the many dedicated individuals who make Manhattan Beach exceptional, our city employees. Richard went through the list of them. I'd like to say that we can sit on this dais and create policies and procedures, but it lies in your talented hands for those to be successfully implemented. So thank you very much. Several former Manhattan Beach mayors have joined us this evening. I saw Russ, and I saw Bob, I saw Wayne, I saw Tim. Is there anybody else?
Suzanne.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said Suzanne. Yeah. Apologies. And so I always keep in my mind and heart that Manhattan, that the Manhattan Beach I fell in love with, where I decided to put down roots, where Nancy and I raised a family, was so incredibly special due to the leadership of those who served in the years before us. Let's give them a well-deserved round of applause. I learned from you that on council, one must follow one's heart and add equal measures of life's experiences, core principles, diligent research, common sense, and most important, listening to our residents. Perhaps there is no more important spot in this council chamber than the one right in front of us, that podium. That podium serves as the window into what concerns our residents the most and provides the opportunity to learn from their experience possible solutions to the issues that face us. I promise I will always listen. About 25 years ago, I came to a council meeting. I was gonna say much like this, but it didn't have that many people in it, and demanded the city add stop signs to our street to slow down traffic endangering our kids. the city add stop signs to our street to slow down traffic endangering our kids. And Mayor Joyce Fahey was on this dais, and she looked over her glasses like this, and she said, Mr. Franklin, what do you intend to do about it? So I was taken aback. But in subsequent meetings with her and city staff, I learned that what works best for our city is the partnership between our residents and the council. Solutions are best made collaboratively and are the most effective when multiple sides of an issue are considered, and people build bridges to create solutions. That's how we can all share in successful outcomes. My goal on council is simple. I want to help current and future residents have the benefits our family enjoyed while living in Manhattan Beach for 35 years. I will continue, I will continue to work hard to make public safety a priority, to have a fully-staffed police and fire department, and continue the work to get misdemeanors properly prosecuted. And oh, by the way, happy National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to our fine police department. We need to do even more with educating our children who ride e-bikes and encourage parents to get more deeply involved. A campaign created by concerned parents Monica Chun and Lisa Newman with their sons, Alex and Justin, please raise your hands. Monica is out of town on business, but they teamed with our schools and police department's school resource officers to educate more than 6,000 children last year on the rules of the road and e-bike safety. We all thank you very much. There have been reports of progress being made with compliance, but we will continue and expand our enforcement and education efforts. I want to continue the fight against onerous zoning laws pushed down from Sacramento in a one-size-fits-all package, making neither common sense nor fulfilling their expected outcomes. Let's look for practical, reasonable, and effective ways to provide more and affordable housing and ask the state legislature for a seat at the table for setting realistic and achievable planning goals and procedures. I'm happy to report that our efforts to address the homeless crisis are finding success thanks to years of hard, compassionate fieldwork by specially-trained police officers, city staff, George Gabriel, funding from and collaboration with the county, our dedicated homeless navigator, and our nonprofit MB Safe. MB Safe was created by your fellow residents Rita Crabtree Compa, Lee Phillips, Lucia Ames, and Debbie Van Ness. Okay. MB Safe volunteers do tireless outreach and fill the gap in services to ensure we get homeless individuals off the street into temporary shelters and start their path to sustainable housing. They are the angels among us. We are truly blessed with a multitude of nonprofit service organizations and charities which exemplify the care and generosity of our city, and I sincerely thank you all. One in particular is the Single Mom Project, which was conceived by a Manhattan Beach resident who vowed to pay forward a gift from a dear friend who helped her when she needed help. The Single Mom Project now provides $1,000 grants to low-income, hard-working mothers in the Los Angeles area to help them get on a steadier financial footing. The grant money has been used to repair a car, fix a refrigerator, to buy shoes and clothes for school, even buying a bed so the mom no longer had to sleep on the floor. And our amazing Leadership Manhattan Beach Program built a food pantry for the Single Mom Project, which now serves 250 people a week. This is one of the first times the Leadership Manhattan Beach Program went beyond our city to help others. I could not be more proud of these collaborative examples of the heart and soul of Manhattan Beach residents who care for and help others around us. Thank you, Janet Jones, the founder of Single Mom Project. Thank you to the Leadership Manhattan Beach Program Class of 2023 and all the prior classes as well. For all the work you've done. It's this deep sense of love and community and compassion for others which we on council strive to forever value, forever preserve, and forever share. I sincerely thank all of you for allowing me to be a part of it. So I'd like to make a motion for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem, Amy Hoerth. City council needs to make a motion and a vote.
I will second that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So we have a first and we have a second, and we have the voting screen.
Do I have to abstain?
Yeah, okay. Are you sure you want to vote for him?
Motion passes five zero.
All green, that's true.
It says here on my sheet that there's, I get 10 minutes for comments. Steve, how's that sound?
That's a typo.
No, no.
One minute.
I'll do like two. Most of my comments are about our new mayor. So thank you, my colleagues. And I'm so grateful that both our outgoing mayor, incoming mayor thanked our staff for doing all the hard work, because not only do they do hard work, they're really good at it. I think I've done a lot of work with councils across the state, and we have the best, or staff, we have the best. So you guys are top-notch. You know, the Mayor Pro Tem, or MPT, as I think we like to say, which sounds so athletic, and I'm not, so it's like so cool, MPT, right? My job is to support the mayor, give him a nudge if maybe he forgot to, you know, do public comments, and I'm really good at telling the men in my life what to do. But I really do it in terms of support and helping the city run and helping you, because it's really hard. I have no doubt that Mayor Franklin is quite able to do all the job, but he will absolutely be dedicated. He will absolutely answer all those emails. He will show up at everything. He already does. And in fact, he's here because, as he was mentioning, he helped with Mayor or Council Member Fahey with the Stop Sign Project, and I believe a stranger danger project. And like Taylor mentioned, you know, all the organizing and all the parties at the House, I mean, Joe shows up, that we know. So I have no doubt that you can do all that. But sometimes it's really hard to run a meeting, so I pledge to you that I will be there and to support you. I really love all the joy I see in this room tonight, and obviously, that's for you, Joe, for you, and Richard. Yeah, sure. It's not your thing. Yeah, you're, who are you? No, but I, it's really great for all of us to see whether, you know, it's been mentioned, we don't all agree on every issue and every policy. I think the five of us do agree on what we want for Manhattan Beach, and we want it to be safe, we want everyone to thrive. We love the town, I mean, I've lived here over 25 years, the town that, you know, my kids have grown up in, and we share that passion and dedication. And I'm just really looking forward to the next, what is it, 10 months? I don't know, nine and a half? How long are you here for? Nine and a half. So I really look forward to all of that. And Joe, even though we've made a joke that it is your first rodeo, actually, I don't think it is, because I think you grew up riding horses, and I know you've taught your kids to ride horses, and I think you've actually been a real cowboy. So might have to get you a real, you know, statue at the end of it all. So thank you all. Yeah, Duncan, what? Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, tell them.
Okay, I'll tell them. Richard knows how much I love Dunkin' Donuts coffee, and it's really because of him that they're here. But hey, everybody, let's start meeting at Dunkin' Donuts Coffee on Sepulveda. That's a plug. In all seriousness, I'm sort of lighthearted because I can feel all of your love for Joe and for what we all do, and I look forward to serving all of you as well as my colleagues. So thank you very much.
I also want to make a quick business comment here, is that the city council assignments will be on the January 16th city council agenda, because a lot of different committees around town want to know who your council rep are going to be. So that's going to be at the January 16th meeting. And so, so we're going to take a quick recess here of the adjourned regular city council meeting and convene the Capitol Improvements Corporation meeting shortly afterwards.
Use that.
Oh, really? First time. Oh, sorry.
There you go.[1113.88]
Oh, sorry.
There you go.[547.88]